All those in favor, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now back in open session. I need a motion to certify closed session. That only the items discussed in closed session were those items that are in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, and only those items that were in the enabling motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Albritton?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Iverson?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
We have several motions out of closed session. The first motion for student A. Who's doing student A? It's a readmit.
I'll do it. I move that we readmit student A, Montgomery County Public Schools. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Albritton?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Iverson?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
We have another motion out of closed session. Student B?
I move that we accept student B back into Montgomery County Public Schools.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Albritton?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Iverson?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Both of those are starting tomorrow.
Yes. Next item is student C.
Make a motion that we expel a student from Montgomery County Schools.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Albritton?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Iverson?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
The last motion out of closed session is for student D.
Make a motion that we long-term student D from Montgomery County Schools. Time served tomorrow.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
I need just a moment. I'm sorry. Who was the second, please? Ms. Albritton, thank you very much. Ms. Albritton?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Iverson?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And that concludes all the motions out of closed session. Moving on with the agenda, I understand that the honors and awards and recognition has been moved to the end of the meeting.
Correct.
And that the honorees will be showing up shortly. Therefore, we're going to move to public address and open it up for public address. This is where the board sets aside 30 minutes with a maximum of three minutes per citizen to address the board on items of educational interest. And at this time, I do not see anyone who has signed up ahead of time, and therefore I will open it up to the audience to see if anyone wants to speak for the board. Seeing no one, public address is now closed. Next item on the agenda is consent items. We have a couple of items related to consent. Does anybody want to pull any items for discussion? I would point out that we do have a donation under item consent items, and we'd like to thank the anonymous donor for the $10,000 to Auburn Elementary Landscaping.
Now, was that in kind or actual dollars?
It was in kind.
Okay. Either way.
Either way.
Awesome. Fantastic. Love.
Hearing no further discussion, all items under consent are approved. The next item on the report is the personnel report. Seek a motion to approve the personnel report.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the personnel report? All those in favor signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Personnel report is approved. The next item is financial reports. We have a payment of the bills. Need a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the bills? All those in favor signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills are paid. Next item is the financial summary report. Need a motion to approve the report.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the report? All those in favor signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Financial summary report is approved. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report recommendations and announcements. Ms. Blackburn?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. My first item this evening are the 2014 legislative priorities. Each year, the school board identifies priorities to be shared with our legislative delegation. The attached list represents the priorities identified by the board and superintendent through our preliminary discussion. The list is provided for the board's discussion and will be modified after the VSBA conference, where we might get some additional information. And I'll bring the list back to you at your first December meeting for your action. But again, it is tonight for your discussion if there are things that I may have missed that you'd like to add. The only thing that is new on there is the very last one, which is one that Mr. Jones had suggested that I put, and it's actually about the composite index. It's a little hard to communicate such a complex topic in a few words, but I gave it our best shot. I would share with the board that we did get the composite index for the next biennium yesterday, and it is down just a little bit. To give you the history, 2010, 2012, it was .3549. 2012-14, it was .4053, and that's when we lost the $2 million in state money because of the increase in the composite. And this year, it's going down to .3864. I can't tell you how that, you know, computes to dollars and cents at this point, but at least it did go down instead of up this time.
And this is on your, for information and not action.
That's correct.
The only other question I have is that in the past, one of the things we've done where it talks about the funding for, the very first one about funding, we usually have defined the number of positions above the state formula that we actually fund out of our, you know, the funding is just based on the SOQ, and that's a certain amount, but then we fund above that, and we usually have defined the number of positions we fund above that, and we're curious if we can define that again.
So you're saying that where it says including additional funding for high-cost programs? You want to know the number?
Yeah. If they're teachers. In the past, on some of our legislative things, the funding is only up to a certain amount of teachers, but we fund well above that. And we usually define how much more we have, right?
Right, because we have more teachers than...
We have more teachers than the actual funding. In the past, we have defined what that amount is. I think that's an important data point.
It would give it more impact.
Yeah.
We're happy to add that information, Katie, if you would figure that out for me. You don't have to tell me tonight, though.
Yeah. I don't need... You can bring it back for the second really.
Yeah, we need to know before we leave.
No. No, we don't.
Any other things that the board would like to see added or deleted? As I said, I thought you might hear some conversation at VSBA that would drive this.
And I think the other thing I'll bring up is what goes along with this is unfunded mandates. How are we doing, how are we going to? The list of unfunded mandates. I know you put something in there, but I thought we hit a pretty long list.
That's the official chart that came out of the legislative session. It was created not only by Montgomery County Public Schools, but by lots of other school divisions. I added to that the Virginia Long-Term Disability that we're being required to provide for our new hybrid VRS employees, and I also added the VRS hybrid plan as being essentially an unfunded mandate because it's requiring that the same personnel run two systems as opposed to one system, and it's a labor cost. Probably one that I should add is the CPR that's being required, but I'm happy to revise it or add anything else that you would like to have added, but those were the three that came to, you know, the new ones that came to our staff's attention.
Okay. So, Mr. Jones, are you saying you want to actually have that listed or just do it as an attachment?
Well, I'd like to see it as a, I mean, I think the legislative priorities and the unfunded mandates are kind of woven together in that we should be presenting both at the same time. Yes.
Yeah.
So, you know, when we approve our priorities, we should also be reinforcing that, but here's some unfunded mandates, because I think a few of us who attended some of the recent dinner meetings with our legislators, I remember one in particular who was just, "What are the unfunded mandates?" And I'm like, "Dude, you're the one that created them. You should know." So I think we really need to be communicating and focused on this and the unfunded mandates and communicate them at the same time.
Happy to add it as an attachment. We do have the issue unfunded and underfunded is included in the priority.
That's fine.
Is that what you want?
Yeah.
The list attached.
You're going to put together for us those.
You already have them. You have them.
And I think we're getting, I think we're getting the public support on that also. Did you receive that email in reference to the conversation that one of our parents had with Havib?
I did.
Yeah.
Mr. Jones copied me.
And I think that's indication that our parents are concerned about this also, so I think that would be a good move if we could do that.
Again, this is brought as information, so if you will continue to feed the superintendent information as related to our priorities and unfunded mandates issue, we'd be most appreciative of that, and you'll be bringing this back before its...
December the 3rd.
December the 3rd meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item that I have this evening is topics for the joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors. As you know, we've scheduled a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors on December the 10th. The school board has been asked to provide input for topics that you would like to have discussed there or that you would like to speak with the Board of Supervisors about. I have two suggestions at this point, one being the capital needs in the Christiansburg Strand, and the other being an update from the county on the status of the former school properties that have been turned over to them.
Those are good ones.
I agree, but with, I guess I would like to know what we're going to be talking about as far as the Christiansburg Strand. We haven't done our feasibility study, and quite frankly, last year, the year before, one of our supervisors just, you know, went out and said, you know, "Here's how much money that we need to do for Christiansburg, and it needs to go here," and we had to deal with that. So I just don't want us to be caught up in a situation where the supervisors are going to try to tell us what to do before we have our information.
That's the reason why I think it needs to be on the agenda, because I agree with you. And the intent here is that we kind of take, again, bring up the fact that to do the Christiansburg Strand, the first step is a feasibility study.
Right.
Okay? And bring that before them again, and let people know that we're not forgetting the Christiansburg Strand, and that that needs to be our focus in the next round of capital improvement. Of course, we're going to be meeting at the old CMS building, and you know, the...
No, we're not.
We're not. I'm trying to meet over there.
No.
Okay. I'm sorry.
No, this meeting is scheduled for Cross Point, actually.
Okay.
One of the things I had suggested is perhaps we have done the inventory at old CMS. It's cleaned, and it's ready. I walked it today. It's ready. If the board would like to take a field trip over there before a meeting one evening and/or if you'd like to invite the supervisors to join us to take a tour through that building, because there is a misconception that we spent a lot of money on that building and that it would be ready to walk in and serve as an elementary school, and that's not the case. It is definitely a secondary property in many ways. It had about $1.6 million spent on it. The CardnoTech study said that you would need to spend somewhere, I've forgotten the number, but it was millions of dollars on it to bring it back into what would be considered your facility standards. In addition, the cafeteria was approved for temporary operation only, and we don't know if they would extend that courtesy to us again. The money, the biggest expenditure at old CMS was the lease of the portables, and there were, you know, about 11 classroom spaces that we were leasing, and they were quite pricey. Majority of the money went for technology, some of which we are reusing already, but we have left all the smart boards in there because we don't want to, you know, take them down if we are going to, you know, institute a reuse plan. The only thing we can really say about old CMS at right this minute is that we have it cleaned, we have it maintained at a temperature that will preserve its usefulness. There are a lot of things that need to be talked about in relationship to that property that would come out of the feasibility study, really. We have budgeted for the feasibility study from your end-of-the-year money. We do have three people who've responded to the RFP on the feasibility study, but we won't really know anything by the 10th, other than it's been out there, we've got three responders, we're going to be talking with the responders.
And I think all of that would be good information to have at this joint meeting to let, I think it, there's probably some people who still have that misperception that that building is ready to just walk in tomorrow and start conducting classes, and I think it, probably educating people on old CMS and what it's ready for is a good thing, especially the board. I don't know if everybody understands that.
Well, we also have, you know, two off-site programs that we, you know, are going to have to deal with also in relationship to available facilities, one being the Independent Secondary Phoenix program, which is currently in leased space, which is an additional expense for the board, the other being Wilson House, which is over by Harding, which certainly is serving the needs of a small population right now, but it's not an ideal facility for the program or for the students that we are serving there. So those have to be taken into consideration also.
Well, I was going to ask about that and wondered if the Christiansburg School couldn't be used for those programs. Do we have, could we move them at this point? Because I've brought up independent secondary over and over, and I just think since we have this facility, that's much better than where they are.
You might want to see what your, you can do what you want to do, okay, but you might want to see what the feasibility study says, because you don't want to pull them out of where they are, lose the lease, put them at old CMS, decide that that needs to be demolished or that, you know, it needs to be reused as overflow for a short-term elementary. So it's very complex. It's not just, it's not simple.
All this is good, but it's a different discussion. We're focused on the agenda.
Well, I was going to bring that up under newer or old business, wherever it fits, so I'd be glad to do that.
I just, we've got two items, and I want to make sure that there's no other items. I guess one of the things I heard was the CardnoTech report. I don't, is that something that we need to share with the Board of Supervisors?
Certainly is one that we would like to keep on the radar, because I know in my conversations with the county manager, it's on their, it's on their radar, that there's a $2 million unfunded need for capital maintenance on a yearly basis.
Bringing that up, it would probably be a good thing, so it doesn't fall off their radar.
Is there any idea of having them visit? That school might be very wise. Do you think that is something you'd want to put out there?
Well, quite frankly, I think it has, you ought to go first, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think you should take a look at it and see what your feeling is about its reuse. Certainly, I'm happy to take the Board of Supervisors or the school board through it, but ultimately, the school is, does not meet your educational standards for an elementary school, a middle school, or a high school. So it's a decision about what kind of compromise you want to make also.
I just wondered if they may want an update on where we are with our security updates too. I don't know. Maybe they've already asked what they'd like the meeting to look like, but they might want to hear about that. I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, the security is definitely an important issue, and I know that we're working to get that funded.
Yes. I went to the Montgomery, the Board of Supervisors' open, what do they call it, conversation thing last night at Gilbert Lincoln's, and they gave us an update on all their properties, and they have a nice video about their year. So I assume we're going to share that kind of stuff with about our year, too.
And I'm sure we'll have enrollment material as far as the Christiansburg Strand and how that affects the PTR with the buildings that we're in, because there seems to be a perception that there, the need at the elementary level can be put on hold for the high school.
Well, I think perhaps the best way that I can approach that for you is to bring your capital plan, because you...
Right.
This board did approve a capital plan, and your first priority was the Christiansburg Strand, and I believe it was an elementary as the first consideration.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure they understand the criteria that we used, the data that we looked at.
Any other comments?
Do we need to bring up the accreditation process that we just finished? And the indication by the accreditation committee was that we need to move into the, more of the device area and the electronic area?
That would be your last good news pitch, you would share with them.
We usually do some good news at the end, but to clarify, the recommendation on technology from the visiting team was that as they walked through our classrooms, they saw a lot of teaching stations for technology, and they saw sometimes teachers using the technology, but they didn't observe actually the students using it as much. And part of the conversation that I had with them in a pre-conference was that that is generally the area where school divisions, and this is a new system, have had the lowest rating, and it's, part of it's a growing, you know, thing. Once you put the technology in there, I think teachers have to feel comfortable with using it before they're comfortable with letting kids use it. So that was what their recommendation was, that we needed to focus on continuing to improve the available technology, but also to focus on assisting our teachers with knowing how to get kids actively engaged with using the technology in the classroom.
And also, didn't they discuss moving away from textbooks into technology, or is that just something I made up?
I didn't, I don't specifically remember that, but I certainly know that's a passion for you, and it's a passion, it's a passion for me as well, and we're going to be talking about it some more with you in the December 3rd meeting, and there'll be some really important things for you to make decisions about.
Okay.
I think it's a polite way of saying you made it up.
What? What?
A polite way of saying it was made up. Anything else, board members? Next item.
Okay, so I'm going to add to this list, the CardnoTech, keeping it on the radar. Maybe something about the security update. We have a little video that it might be, I know not all of our supervisors have seen what we've done at Falling Branch, so we might actually show that little video clip there just for them to see what it's like. And the, along with the Christiansburg Strand feasibility study, to include our capital plan that clearly designates what the priorities were and how that decision was made using enrollment data. And then we, Craig and I have generally closed with a list of accomplishments, and definitely the accreditation is, we all breathed a real nice sigh of relief at the end of that day, okay? It was quite an undertaking, and I can't say enough about the team and Dr. Graham's leadership and all the school principals and teachers who were very active in that Next item? Next item is health insurance, and we've been talking about this now for over a period of time. We talked about it some last year, we've talked about it twice this year, and at the October 1 meeting, you had insurance consultant Keith Sharp make a presentation. At the November 5 meeting, he stated that based on the analysis of Montgomery County Schools' past four-year history of health insurance, that he strongly encouraged Montgomery County Public Schools review and implement a self-funded health insurance plan, starting with the plan year October 2014. And it is my recommendation this evening that the board authorize staff to pursue movement to a self-funded insurance plan.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I thought the presentation was very good. I learned a lot, and I really didn't have a whole lot of questions afterwards. Thought you did a good job.
And we discussed this with the MCEA, the...
We made, we had, we had the same presentation made to the MCEA group, the insurance committee that has MCEA representatives on it.
And the county is also looking at doing this, we'd be doing this together, right?
Not necessarily, because that's the next step. The county has already moved to self-insurance, and they are self-insured now. So the next step as part of the actuarial look is, is it economically advantageous to us to be in a group, a self-funded group with the Board of Supervisors? And so I'll be bringing you more data about whether it is to our advantage or not to our advantage to go into a group with them. And if you go into a group with them, it doesn't mean that the two plans look exactly alike, but it means the funding stream is operated mutually.
Do we have time to do that for the next plan year?
We hope to do it by December, because we have been gathering the data and asking the consultant to take a look at it.
We have a motion and a second. It's on the table. Any further discussion? I think considering the nature of this motion and the topic, I'm going to ask for roll call on this, since it is talking about insurance and funding.
Ms. Albritton?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Iverson?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. Motion passed.
The next item is policy 7-2.3 attendance policy and 6-6.2 exam policy, because they have some related pieces in them that you have to adjust the exam policy if you adjust the attendance policy. The school board at the October 1 meeting, we presented policy 7-2.3 for the board's discussion and consideration. At the last meeting, we provided you with a potential policy. We got input from school principals and shared that with you, and the item is brought back this evening for your continued discussion and/or action to adopt a new policy or to remain with your current policy.
My question is, I really was hoping we could take them separately, and so it would be interesting to me to know how, why we can't do that, or why it's recommended we don't.
Why do you want to...
Well, they're tied together.
Tied together, yeah.
Yeah, they're tied together.
They are tied together. Okay.
What you do to attendance causes you to have to make some changes in the exam policy. So if you don't change the attendance policy, you don't need to do anything to the other one. So they're hand in hand.
Thank you.
Well, I'll begin, because I was the one that brought the policy to the board's attention based on my own personal experience and when it's happened before being a board member. It's not the first time that this has occurred. I went home, reviewed policy, looked at policy, and, you know, I'm the one that has recommended item J about hospitalization, extended illness, doctors, or dental appointments, and it requires a doctor's note. I don't think children should be counted absent or tardy if they have a legitimate reason for being tardy or being out of school for medical reasons. And if it requires a doctor's note, I think that that's reasonable. There are, I have had two contacts from parents who have had similar situations in which if you are going to, for whatever reason, you have multiple visits in a short period of time, you can achieve, you know, the way the current policy is, you can achieve some tardies and absences pretty quickly. And... And when I looked at all of the reasons that should not contribute, I don't think that things were being fairly administered, in my personal opinion. And I'm in support of what the superintendent has recommended as far as the policy change.
I have a question.
I haven't recommended a policy change. I brought a policy that reflects the discussion of the board, so I've not taken a position on the policy.
The hospitalization or extended illness, isn't that covered through homebound teach, teachers?
Yes, it would be, and with doctor's notes, hospitalization or extended illness would be.
Which means those students would be marked present.
Right. No, they're marked absent, but it doesn't, they're allowed to make up the work. If you're not there, you're-
Okay.
And the policy states that there can be a credit review meeting to-
Right.
Yes.
I'll state again that I would like to keep the policy as it is for two reasons. Wendell, I've had people contact me and say they'd like, the parents have contacted me saying that they would like the policy to stay as it is, and the fact that our two larger schools, when we asked for input, did not want to see the change. I think that's very important to me personally.
I think our principles were split, kind of like we're split. You know, some of us are siding with you. I think if a student has a doctor or note from a dentist, then I think they should be excused. And, you know, like you said, there are several reasons that I might have to be out, there might be a broken leg or something, I have to go back for multiple visits, that's not going to be covered under homebound if I'm in school and going back for multiple visits. So in my opinion, I'm siding with you that I think if they have a doctor's note, they should be excused from school.
And again, my, I think that if we're going to excuse kids who are going to field trips and going to athletic events, then these are the type of kids that, kids that have legit medical reasons should be excused as well.
But those are school-sponsored activities.
I understand that, but it's not being equi, it's not equal. It's not fair, you know, you're not, we've heard from Advanced Ed talking about equality, and it's, this is not, not there.
I, I didn't get the Advanced Ed and that equality coming out of that part of it, so I have to go clear on the record to that. But with my not thinking the policy needed to be changed, just because I just do believe there are people that take advantage of that.
Yes.
You and your family may not have, and I think as a general rule, most families that don't take advantage of the situation and sometimes get caught up in the middle, usually works out okay. I feel like most, or all of our schools work with families as much as possible, but I do see, and I do think, that there are families that take advantage of the situation. Maybe I shouldn't feel that way.
Yeah, I have to agree with you.
So the ones who don't take advantage of the situation are penalized for those who do.
And you know what, I fall in that category just like you do, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong, just like I'm taking my daughter with me to Williamsburg, well, that's a choice I'm making, and she will get her work, but I feel like, you know what, she's a straight A student in advanced courses, and I'm accepting that she's going to miss those days.
But for those that take advantage of the situation, are they going to be able to get a doctor's note every time their child misses school? I mean, to me, that's the reason that I would agree with, that a doctor's note is required.
When I say take advantage of the situation, maybe because I think we have quite a few early releases, and I've always expressed my opinion on that since I've been on the board, and I think a lot of times we, with the doctors, you know, I don't know how to explain what I'm trying to say, but instead of using those days or certain other days, we'll take advantage of, well, I can get as long as I bring back a doctor's excuse.
Well, I can tell you how the advantage can probably play into it, as long as you have one doctor visit sign note, students are very smart, they scan that note, photo editor, and excuse there, new date, it's done. So I just feel like there's many reasons why we shouldn't make this change. Number one, we have three out of our four high schools under warning, and if we're becoming more relaxed about our policy, what is this saying about the board and how we are trying to engage our students and achieve academic achievement? And we're wanting to, for example, on the, the exam exemption policy, if you look at our policy currently, it says that our minimum goal is 95% attendance rate, well, that's nine days, and with the change that we have proposed tonight, it's allowing us to exempt, allowing students to exempt from exams with nine days. Well, how is that a reward if we're, they're achieving the minimum nine days? And I believe that we're not being punished by being absent for going to the doctor. It's, it's absent, and that is something that has, has to happen sometimes, and you're allowed to have so many, and there's no punishment that's happening there.
Well, yeah, there is, if you're under multiple doctor's excuse, that you can't control the time, it is a punishment when it's been reflected on your letter, your, your record as an absence. I consider that a punishment.
Well, I don't.
Wait, okay, my turn, my turn. First of all, I don't see it as, as being lax, I see it as being equitable, because I absolutely agree that children who are allowed out of school for athletic functions and is excused is not equitable for students who are sick, or students who need medical attention of some kind that may be repeated. And just because we have early release days, that doesn't mean that the parent's schedule at work is going to work with those early release days to be able to get them to the doctors or the dentist, and their schedules, again, don't work around ours. And I believe Ms. Foster stated before, when parents see those dates come up on the calendar, they immediately start trying to make appointments to, to work those in, so not everybody can always get in. So I, I, I am agreeing with Mr. Jones, and we do need to make a change.
All right, if, my turn. We've kicked this can around two, two, two meetings now, we're beginning to sound like Congress. So I'm going to make a motion that we keep policy 7-2.3 as is without the blue additions and the subtracts. In other words, keep the policy the way it was before we, we added to it.
Second.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? No further discussion, roll call please.
Ms. Albritton?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
No.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Mr. Iverson?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Motion carries.
That finishes my agenda.
Mr. Jones, if I may make a suggestion, we still need about another 10 or 15 minutes before all of our seniors of the month will be in the room. Would you be opposed to us moving honors awards and recognitions behind announcements?
Sure.
Giving us a little bit more time to allow those people to get here? Thank you very much.
Items of unfinished business by school board members?
We've already talked some about independent secondary, but I really hope it's high on our agenda as far as finding a new location for it. If y'all have been there to visit, it's, I admire the, the teachers and staff and all that are making it happen for those kids.
Any other items of unfinished business by school board members? Hearing none, items of new business by school board members? Hearing none, announcements and information by school board members?
Yeah, I'd like to announce, and I'm sorry that we're going to be in conflict with Ms. Franklin's presentation to the community, what is it? What are you doing, community? What are you doing at the lyric? Anyway, we're-
Voices.
Voices, community voices, but I'm delighted that we are doing the program on hiring and retention of African-American personnel. I'm just sorry it's conflicting with community voices. And I would also like to recommend, I don't know if this is our job or not, but my husband and I went to see the civil rights photo exhibit at the Taubman Museum on Saturday, and if there's any way during, it's going to be, I think, through the mid of January, if that could be shared with our teachers, it might be a field trip that would be worth taking. Yeah, it was really a fantastic exhibit.
Well, I would like to thank all of those who are involved in the Advanced Ed accreditation process. I know that that was a highly intensive, highly effort, a lot of late nights, I'm sure, early mornings, weekend work, a lot of work behind the scenes that a lot of people don't realize that goes into trying to achieve this type of accreditation. So to Dr. Graham and those of, that supported Dr. Graham in this process to achieve the Advanced Ed accreditation, thank you. Thank you very much for all your hard work, and to everybody else that did the hard work. I think that those that were in attendance heard that we are doing a lot of good things in Montgomery County related to our educational system. And we had an independent group of people from outside this county come in and be able to do a, a good assessment and provide us with some good feedback. We have some room to improve and room to grow, and that's always good, but it's always nice to hear that a group of people tell you that you, you've got a great school system. And that, I think the true testament was the lead auditor who said that she has a granddaughter, I believe it was, who said that she would be proud to have her daughter attend Montgomery County Public Schools, and that in itself is a true testament of the good things that we're doing. So, Dr. Graham, congratulations, and thank you for all your hard work.
Yes.
Two, two announcements, number one, Blacksburg High School's women's cross-country team won the state championship, and the, the men took fourth place, which is very admirable. Also, for all you wrestling fans out there, Virginia Tech has-
Eleven and O.
Virginia Tech has two Christiansburg graduates who are wrestling on their team. One is ranked second or third in the nation, and the other is ranked 20th in the nation. And that, when you're talking about the nation, that's pretty good.
That's right.
And they, they are just doing great, just great.
And you know more about wrestling than anybody else on this? I don't know about that. I know quite a bit about myself. My house today.
I'm sorry, I think the match of the year would be Ms. Franklin and myself.
Thank you. Thank you.
You want to do that?
Thank you.
I gotta get in shape for that.
We can sell tickets for that.
Any other announcements and information? Okay, we've got, we want to end your upcoming school board meetings, next one is December the 3rd, and now we're to honors, awards, and recognition, I tried to stretch it to-
Yeah, why don't I, it's up to the board, but what we could do is move the break to right now.
Okay.
We could take, we could break until 7:30, come back for honors, awards, and recognitions, and then adjourn immediately following. That would still give you time to meet with our honorees, but that's up to you, Mr. Jones.
Okay, board members? We have, we have, we have people coming in, so we really have no choice, so we'll take a break until 7:30, and we'll come back at 7:30 and do the honors, awards, and recognition.
All right.
Sure.
Yes.
Call a meeting back to order. Our final agenda item is honors, awards, and recognition, and tonight we have our November seniors of the month, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. John Stanton, who will be introducing the different high school principals for our seniors of the month award. Dr. Stanton?
We will now begin our honors, awards, and recognitions for this evening. I ask Jennifer Weaver, our director of secondary education, to come forward to introduce the seniors of the month.
Good evening, I think I've kept you waiting long enough, so at this time, I would like to introduce to you, Blacksburg will not be able to be here this evening, but we have Auburn, Eastern Montgomery, and Christiansburg seniors of the month. We'll start with Auburn, Mr. Carl Polly is here to present his senior of the month.
It is with great pride that I introduce to you Auburn High School's November Senior of the Month, Max Tomlin. As a student, Max is gifted in self-discovery, assimilates material quickly, and excels in applying concepts in real-world applications. Max also displays an inquisitiveness that is admirable. He doesn't ask questions often, but when he does, he is always seeking out more depth in understanding. He has widely read outside course materials, and his perspectives, often brought by this additional reading, enhance his questions as well as his understanding of the material. Not only does Max excel academically, he is a gifted musician and a talented athlete. He is a true Renaissance man. Max is accompanied this evening by his parents, Emily Tolliver and Tim Tomlin, and their families, if they would all come forward this evening to be recognized.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Superintendent, come over. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, congratulations. Thank you.
Thanks again for coming to me. I'm glad you asked.
The student is speaking.
Thank you.
Hit quiet.
It is with great pride that I introduce to you Christiansburg High School's November Senior of the Month, McKinley Anne Rohr. McKinley was selected a senior of the month for his incredible work ethic, positive attitude, friendly demeanor, and high level of school spirit. During all four years of his high school career, he has been a fixture on the sidelines of the CHS football games where he established the highest possible standard for all students who may follow him in the role of team manager. He has also been a member of the Christiansburg High School Leadership Team, where his ability to provide an honest and sincere student perspective has proven to be extremely valuable in guiding the school's plans for improvement. McKinley is a solid student, active citizen, and positive force in every endeavor that he undertakes. The entire CHS community is very proud to call him one of our own. McKinley is accompanied this evening by Mike and Marie Rohr, his parents, and Luther and Blondine Woolwine, his grandparents. Will you please come forward at this time to be recognized?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's nice to have you.
It's very tall.
It's so nice to have you.
Thank you.
I know you're proud of it.
And we are too.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Mary thought makes her a symbol. Mary thinks.
Ms. Blackburn, Mr. Jones, members of the board, it's with great pride tonight that I introduce to you Eastern Montgomery High School's November Senior of the Month, Ms. Sarah Lynn Acid. English teacher Samantha Sharp at Eastern Montgomery had this to say about Sarah. Sarah is an extremely hard-working student. She excels in all of her classes, be it DE English to band, where she is our drum major. Sarah has an incredible sense of humor and always brings a positive attitude to the classroom. Sarah's zest for life and learning is evident the moment she walks into a room. It has been my extreme pleasure to have taught Sarah for the past three years at Eastern Montgomery High School. Sarah is accompanied tonight by her parents, Tim and Lisa Acid, as well as Susan Terayeva, one of our foreign exchange students at Eastern Montgomery that her family is hosting, and she is from the Czech Republic, if they would join me, please.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
Thanks for coming. Thank you so much. Thank you.
And now return the chair to Mr. Jones. Sarah is accompanied tonight by her parents, Tim and Lisa Acid, as well as Susan Terayeva, one of our foreign exchange students at Eastern Montgomery that her family is hosting and she is from the Czech Republic. If they would join me, please.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And now return the cheer to Mr. Jones.
And I believe that is the final agenda item for the evening. And with that, I ask for a motion for adjournment. We'll be able to greet the folks after we adjourn, so.
So moved.
I heard a motion and so moved. All those in favor signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we're now adjourned. Thank you all for coming. If the seniors of the month would hang out so we can.